Language. Good evening and welcome. My name is Paul Alpert and I am the Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment except in connection with any hearing that is on it on the agenda. There is no hearing that is on the agenda tonight. First, we will confirm that a quorum of the members of the planning board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you were present and then I will introduce the planning department and other staff members. Martin Jacobs.
Present.
Jean McKnight.
Present.
Adam Block.
Present.
And I'm present Natasha Espada is not present at the present time, but we have a quorum. Our town staff. I see a blank space where it says Lee Newman. I will call Lee Newman and see if she responds. Lee Newman. Okay, she hasn't responded yet. Alex Clea, our Assistant Planning Director.
Yeah.
Donna Kalinowski. Our Minute Taker.
Here.
Thank you.
Lee Newman is still not here. We are going to wait to to take our first agenda item to give Lee a chance to to log in. She is having some computer problems. Looks like she just logged off and is going to try it again. So. We do have. Jean McKnight just went off of her video, so I don't know if she's here or not.
I am here.
Okay.
I believe I saw an email from Natasha, not today, saying that she would be joining this meeting at approximately eight o'clock when another meeting she's at concludes.
Well, we are asking her to be present for the executive session. So when we go into executive session, if it's before eight o'clock, Adam will text her to see if she's available.
All right.
Join us.
She's not participating on the first item of the agenda because she's recused herself on the subject. Right. Understood.
So even though Lee is not here yet, I'm going to raise this procedural issue for the board, which is that we are going to go into executive session. We will have a motion when we're ready to go into executive session, we will, we will have a motion to go into executive session. And then the question is whether at the conclusion of that motion, we state that we will be coming back to this open meeting at the end of executive session. Or whether if we decide we do not have anything to discuss in open meeting after executive session. We can state that when we adjourn the executive session, it will be an automatic adjournment of the of the open meeting. Do we have some thoughts one way or the other on that from board members? Jean?
Do we have to make that statement right at the during as part of the, I guess we do, of course, we have to make that statement. While we're still in the public session before we enter the executive session, right?
Right, so that if there are any attendees. And it looks like there are attendees. There are three attendees. So the attendees would have to know whether they should hang around to see whether we have anything to say after after the executive session, or whether they should just log off because we're not coming back. Yes, Mari?
My thought is we should absolutely declare that we're going to come back into the open session after conclusion of executive session. If only to let those attendees know that we're done and they don't have to hang around anymore.
Also, if if Lee Newman continues to have technical difficulty and we're relying on her to discuss with us the peer review project fee. Perhaps we'll end up going into executive session and then coming out of executive session to discuss the peer review fee.
That's a good point, but I think it's important that she participate in the executive session. So if she can't log on, I think we've got some problems here. Yes, Adam?
I would, I would recommend Alex, if these Zoom meetings, you can also call in. There's an actual manual phone number that you can use. So I wonder if we should raise her by phone. We don't necessarily need her video, but maybe we could have her by phone at least.
Okay, I'm on the phone with her right now. It sounds like things are working out, but I'll suggest that. Thank you.
Okay.
I see Lee Newman Square with her name, big and small. Looks good. Oh, now the big name disappeared.
It's a bit foggy.
Very foggy.
Yeah, Lee, you look like you have Vaseline on the lens.
No.
Good, we can hear you.
That's probably as good as it's going to get. I've been having trouble with this computer all day, so I have no idea what's going on.
Okay, well, we have you.
Okay.
Okay, then. So Lee Newman, our Planning Director, please state for the record that you are present.
I am present.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is a vote to increase the project peer review fee with regard to the major project site plan Needham Enterprises LLC property located at sixteen eighty-eight Central Avenue. Adam, I'm going to turn the chair over to you for this, please. As I have already announced at the previous hearing that I will not be sharing this matter.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. So the issue before us is the fact that we have an increase of fifty one hundred dollars and change in a request by the peer review GPI. And as a result of attending more meetings than anticipated, as originally anticipated, and secondarily as a result of an additional traffic review. Having said that, I also note that Lee sent around to all of us communication from the applicant that they are not going to pay that fifty one hundred dollars. And we have to discuss, you know, the subject and and what our remedies are and what's right in the circumstance. So my first question relates to just the logistics of this thing. What obligations, Lee, do we have to inform the applicants of how much is spent to date on a particular item when we bring in these third-party consultants? And what obligation do we have to provide an estimate to complete throughout the process? And what obligation do we have to manage that process and the third-party consultant and their payments?
Well, the planning board is is supposed to give written notice to the applicant of the selection of an outside consultant. And the amount of the fee this to be charged and to request a payment of set fee in its entirety. And I guess the notice, which is what we did originally for the first part of this is deemed given on the date that it's actually mailed. And then the planning board is able to increase the fees if notify the applicant in the event that additional monies are required. Failure by the applicant to pay the consulting fee specified by the planning board within ten business days of the request can be a cause for the planning board denying the application.
Has there ever been a circumstance where we've had outside a third-party consultant in for an application for a special permit before us in which we utilized for a peer review our own town experts and not third-party experts?
I'm sorry, would you please repeat the question?
Sure. Has there ever been a circumstance where in an application for for a major project site plan review special permit that we have not engaged our own traffic engineer?
Yes, I mean, there have been projects. We don't often do peer reviews. And we we use it only on projects where we feel that that expertise is is required. And so we did it when we were reviewing children's hospitals, you know, permit under the zoning scheme and then basically under the under the special permit that was ultimately issued for that particular project. So we don't use it for every single project that comes along. We we use it for projects where we feel that it's necessary. It's an added tool. And there's, you know, where where there's, you know, sufficient in-house capacity to address an issue. We rely on that.
And so remind us why we went with a third-party consultant instead of our own town traffic engineer?
And because I think we felt that we we needed this extra expertise and there was a lot of questions coming from the neighborhood on traffic issues and the quality of the traffic report that was had been generated by the applicant. And I think we felt you. I think you felt it was important to have a third party independently reviewing it and giving you advice on whether they agree with the report or not, or what extra steps needed to be done to reach a satisfactory conclusion.
Thank you, Lee. Paul?
It's my recollection. I stress that it's my recollection and this was a long time ago. But it's my recollection that part of the reason that we wanted to have an outside peer review was because some of the neighbors had raised the concern that given the applicant's status as a member of the select board or is chair of the select board, if I guess at all, this whole thing happened after Mr. Barelli assumed the chair. As the applicant was the chair of the select board, there was concern raised by the neighbors of the independence of the town employees to review the traffic, the traffic study. And that was part of the reason that that we decided to do this. I hate to throw the football to you, Marty, but it's also my recollection that you're the one who made the motion to have an outside peer review. And I so I'd like to, I guess, ask whether that was part of your reasoning also.
Absolutely. And, you know, it was clearly on the table as an issue. And that that was an issue and that was part of the reasoning for sure. So having said that, how much of the fifty one hundred is for any future meetings, Lee?
I think under John's budget, I think he budgeted three meetings, I think.
Three additional meetings?
I think I think that's what he budgeted. I think he's got four thousand dollars in there for extra meetings. I think he budgeted three more, three more meetings at least.
What I what I saw was a project director ninety dollars an hour, I guess, for twenty hours. And then that equaled about eighteen hundred dollars and then the rest is a fixed fee plus overheads, which brings it from eighteen hundred to fifty one hundred and change. But what I'm not clear on is how much is has have they effectively spent that money entirely to date? Or does that cover two more meetings or three more meetings from today forward?
We have already spent, I mean, with the last meeting that we had, I think we have, we're basically at the end of the of the months of funds that are available under the original fourteen thousand nine seventy-four. So if we want to have John at future meetings or engaged with the consultant, then there needs to be an add-on to the contract. And I think he budgeted. And, you know, if there are less than three meetings, then there'll be monies that are returned here. But right now I think he's budgeting conservatively at three additional meetings.
So none of the fifty one hundred dollars is for any work that was done previously. It's all for additional work in the future if necessary?
Yes, and right now we have no more money to pay him. So if we want to have him look at anything else for us or attend any future meetings, we have no monies to pay for it.
So we.
May I?
Sure. Paul?
Let me understand the contract. We have a contract that says that we will pay them a fee for services. Is it in the contract that says that if the if the amount of time that they have allocated and determining their fee is is higher than than what they projected that they could stop working?
I have to go back and I don't know. I don't have the answer to that question for you directly. I know when this contract was created, it was based upon a certain expectation about how many meetings they would be attending for this job and what they were going to be reviewing.
That may be, but I'm going to put my lawyer's hat on here and say that we have a contract and that GPI has made certain has agreed to certain obligations under that contract. And I think we need to review that contract and see what they agree to. They are asking us to amend. They are asking us to amend the contract to increase the fee. And so the question is, if we don't agree to amend the contract, where do we stand on that contract? So perhaps based on that, I'm not prepared to vote tonight on this. I think we need to review the contract and see what our rights and obligations are here and and what GPI's rights and obligations are under the contract. To see whether they have agreed to provide our services and if they have underquoted their anticipated fee. That's that could, depending on the wording of the contract, that could be their problem if we don't agree to pay them the additional five thousand dollars.
All right, let me ask you a question. You, Lee, you said the expectation was that they were going to attend three meetings. Where did that expectation come from? Was that something that you led them to believe?
That's something that we all I expected in terms of how many normal meetings do we have for a project? And, you know, and what was expected of them. They were going to be reviewing a a traffic study which evolved into a couple of different, you know, reiterations that they were going to be attending, you know, what is normally a normal process for a public hearing. It's too plenty word meanings max. I mean, so I think the protocol that I communicated to them in the scope of work that they developed was based on an expectation that this hearing process was going to be similar to the other hearing processes that we traditionally follow on projects.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Paul.
Um. Huber's email. And for the benefit of the attendees, I will state that the the email was received this afternoon and it has been made part of the public record. And so they they can they can read the email at the town's website in 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 tonight's package. Mr. Huber raises two objections to the increased in fee. The first objection is that GPI exceeded the scope of their authority where they were hired to do a peer review of the traffic study. They expanded that into doing a review of the engineering plans and spending time making recommendations and raising questions with regard to matters that had nothing to do with traffic. I am somewhat sympathetic to that argument. And I raised it at the last hearing, I believe. And I don't. I'm I'm having a problem with the concept that our town engineer did not do that work, that GPI did that work. Having said that, of course, I go back to the beginning that 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 we we have part of the neighborhood group that questions whether the town engineer is is not compromised because of Mr. Mr. Barelli's position on the select board. So we're kind of kind of between a rock and a hard place on that. But the fact of the matter is, I think GPI did go beyond the scope of what they were hired to do. The second argument that Mr. Huber makes is that GPI is billing by the hour and they spend time at at meetings where where matters that had nothing to do with traffic were discussed. And therefore they're billing by the hour to to just sit there. I am not sympathetic to that argument. I would I would be. I I I would be surprised if Mr. Huber were not billing for his time during time that he was sitting at our planning board meetings. And we were discussing other other projects and didn't get to this project until until later in the evening. I mean, that's what lawyers do. So if that's what lawyers do, I think that's what engineers can do. So I think there are some legitimate concerns raised here or a legitimate concern raised. Another concern raised that I'm not sympathetic to. And I think I think we need to review the contract. And if GPI is entitled pursuant to the terms of the contract to be paid for the extra time, we need to find a way to pay for the extra time if we are not paid by the the developer. I may have said this before. I don't remember. I may not have because I certainly thought it. The developer purchased this property for a million two hundred thousand dollars or a million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It is probably going to cost him hundreds of thousands of dollars to build this building. So we're looking at a million and a half to two million dollar project. And he is quibbling over fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in extra fees and I find that to be let me just say disturbing that in the grand scheme of the cost of this project, the developer is refusing to pay this relatively small amount. Those are my thoughts. I wanted to have them on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I recognize Jean.
Comment on the allegation that GPI spent excessive and unnecessary time on what were characterized as engineering comments. I believe our engineering department reviewed the overall drainage, for example, of the site and provided us with the engineering opinion. And as I recall, GPI's input had to do with the the driveway, the connection of the driveway to the road. The particular slope of that driveway, these were all traffic concerns, the location of a of a drain within that driveway is to the extent that the that if it were in its original location would not be a good one for the the traffic. I I think all of those comments were within the framework of traffic concerns. I could be wrong in my memory of how that job was divided between our engineering department and GPI, but that's my memory.
I I recall similarly. Marty, do you have any comments or questions at this time? Only that I have read Attorney Huber's letter closely and I I think he makes some interesting and maybe valid points, but I don't think we have to decide any of that tonight. I Paul's already said he's not prepared to make any decisions on this request tonight until he studies the contract. So I think this is an issue for another day. And then I we I just want to get a little bit more clarity to be sure that the fifty one hundred dollars of an increase has not effectively been money spent to date?
That's correct. It's to cover the hearing for next week, for example. And any work that that meeting or any any future meetings or any work that comes out of that?
I do. I do think overall. And I don't know if we're going to be in a rub between now and and the next public hearing on this matter, but I it's probably in everybody's interest to have GPI present in the event that any, you know, in the event that any of us or the public has any further questions about the traffic or related matters that GPI participated in. So one way or the other, I think that we do want them to be present and to be aware that they should be present. Is that the view shared by the board? Does everyone agree with that?
I think they're planning to be present at the next meeting anyway.
I have no money to pay them, but there's no, you know, there's no monies to pay them, Paul. That's just.
Jean?
I just can't believe it seems so uncalled for that Attorney Huber would object to this. At our last hearing, the comments made by neighbors more than once, over and over, was a lack of of faith in the applicant's traffic studies. And the only way we can assuage that concern is by having the independent the town's hired independent traffic consultant review the traffic study and its updates and advise us on this. It isn't and it isn't just to satisfy the neighbors, it's to satisfy us so that when we make a decision, we know we have a solid basis for making that decision. And I don't know how we can go forward without our traffic consultant being present. And I just, it's unbelievable that this cost would be objected to. That's all I want to say.
Just just so I'm a little bit more clear in the process, I don't disagree with much of the substance of what you, Paul and Jean have articulated already. I Lee. If I do, see, what you're saying is that because this money, this fifty one hundred dollars has not been spent to date. We've had no obligation to give notice to the applicant that until this time that we're going we're going over budget and that we need more funds to complete the 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 review by the third-party engineer. Is that correct?
That's that's correct. I mean, in the case of children's hospital, we had a proposal from to do the work on for that traffic. And it turns out that they were going to go over the dollar amount and I have to amend the contract. I mean, the contract has to be amended to increase the scope of work. I have a current contract, but then to provide a certain service for a certain fee. I can get you the contract, but that was those were the terms. And now, you know, the 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 scope is the scope has changed. And there's additional work here. There's additional that are being expected. And so the contract has to be amended. I need a new scope of work and I need to amend the contract to reflect that. And otherwise, absent that in the funds to pay for it, I can't authorize the work to go forward.
So I think it's true that we've we've seen that we've had the contract, but and I think we may have had an opportunity to provide. and I think we may have had an opportunity to provide you with any comments on it, though it's understandable at this point to review the contract again as we are in this spot that we're in. And yet it was not contemplated by that original contract that, that we'd enter into this secondary study of what they call the corridor approach or a network approach to looking at traffic. I think that yielded the same result or a similar result. However, it was not contemplated in the original scope. And I recognize that the work already done to date was a bit beyond that scope. However, if we, we might have been in a position to inform the applicant's attorney that we are probably going over budget here and that they had reasonable notice that that was going to happen. I think that's probably our obligation. So I don't know what the outcome is, except for the fact that we, I'll be right there, Paul. Except for the fact that we all acknowledge that we need GPI present at the next and any subsequent hearing until we close the hearing. So what are our options, Paul?
Yes. So at this point, I would like to ask Lee, I'm, I'm sure when we first signed the contract, she sent us copies of it and or at least she sent it to me as chair and to you as vice chair. But, you know, it would be a lot faster for me to review it if she sent it again. I would, I would ask that she, that she send it to all four of us and also send a copy to Mr. Heap. And I would, I would ask Mr. Heap to, to look at at our regulations, the rules, the rules of the planning board regarding this. So that if yet, if the developer refuses to pay it, I would ask Mr. Heap to advise us as to whether we have any remedies against the developer. And in terms of not having the money to pay it, I would suggest that, that the planning board, if the developer refuses to pay it, that regardless of what Mr. Heap's advices as to our ability to seek legal recourse against the developer, that we go to the town manager and ask that this be paid from other town funds. Probably the town manager would probably have to go to the finance committee to have them pay it out of, out of the reserve fund. Is my guess, but I think, I think we would need to have to, we would need to first go through the town manager and you know, whether she needs to then advise the select board or seek the select board to authorize the town to pay these funds that are not being paid by Needham Enterprises LLC. Matt, Matthew Barelli, manager. We can take that up with the town manager.
Chris, do you concur that our two options are A, if in the event the applicant refuses to pay that we have the legal authority to deny the application on that basis? And secondarily, if we choose not to do that, that we effectively pay for it in a request to FinCom subject to their approval?
I agree that failure to pay peer review consulting fees that the board has required of an applicant would be a basis to deny the the board can always go ahead with, if there's other monies available to pay for the peer review consultant, the board could go that route. I certainly can't speak to whether there's any money available. And it's never good practice to, you know, continue to incur fees from your consultants without the money in hand from the developer. The best approach always is to get the money in hand from the developer first, and that is their legal obligation under, under state law. So I, I think the planning board is in a good position to demand the additional fees that its consultant believes it needs. And I do believe it has the leverage to extract those funds from the developer.
Okay.
Not yet, Paul. Jean had her hand up first. Jean?
Yes, I'd like to wrap this up now. I think, given that we have another hearing coming up on this. And I, I have a suggestion that addresses the concern Paul had about whether the original contract with GPI requires GPI to keep working on this until we're satisfied, you know, that the, the job is done, no matter how many meetings it takes, et cetera. And so it, it seems to me that a contract would typically have an unforeseen circumstances clause and that, you know, the typically the, it would say that if there is additional work needed, that, that, that the contractor will consult with the town and not undertake the additional work unless the town agrees that it should be, you know, will be paid for the additional work because this was unforeseen, something like that you'd expect. So what I'm thinking is suppose we vote that we, we want to demand that this additional money be paid by the developer. Unless after review of the contract with GPI is clear that we have a right to demand this work free of additional charge from GPI. And therefore essentially we're leaving the final decision to Lee McNorman in consultation with town council. But we're making that decision tonight.
I'm sorry, was that in the form of a motion?
Still moved.
Second that.
Any further discussion?
Well, this, this is, I'm sorry, go ahead, Paul.
I, I, I just, so far, all that I've been supplied with are the rules of the planning board for, for the obligation of the developer to, to provide these funds. Mr. Heap has stated that it's actually a requirement of state law. And so I would ask Mr. Heap to send us that citation so that we can advise Mr. Huber on the state law requirement.
I, I recognize town council.
Thank you. What state law actually says is that the planning board and all other permitting boards are authorized to extract peer review consultant fees from applicants, provided they have a local regulation in place that says they can do that. So I, I have not, I don't have your regulation in front of me, but the state law is effectively an authorizing statute that allows you to adopt the regulation. And once that's done, to demand the money from the
Lee did send to us the rules and the procedural rules and regulations for subdivision controls from on March, dated March 20, 2012, which may be the effective citation. But Marty, did you have another?
Yeah, I'm not, I don't think I'm exactly averse to the way Jean phrased it, but I'm going to just, I know you can't have two motions on the floor at the same time, but I'm going to phrase a motion that Jean may view as somewhat better than hers or not. I don't know.
It might very well. Thank you.
Let's, let's just try it. This is what I would say. I would say something along these lines. The planning board after discussion decides that it's, the planning board sense that we should not proceed further in this hearing without the services of GPI. That the proposed amended contract by GPI is reasonable and that the planning board will not proceed with this hearing until such time as satisfactory arrangements have been made for, or secured for the payment of GPI's amended contract. And that allows, that would allow us to proceed at whatever time we secure that assurance and/or it allows Attorney Huber and his client to decide whether or not to, to revoke his current position. So however that assurance is made, as soon as it's made, we'll go forward. But I don't, I don't want to, I agree. I don't want to proceed without GPI.
So Jean, would you regard that as a friendly amendment to your motion or should you withdraw your motion and?
It's just, just one thing, it doesn't address, as my motion did, the concern raised by Paul Albert that we possibly have the opportunity under the GPI original contract to require this additional work for the price originally quoted. And, and also I'm a little concerned about saying we will not schedule a hearing. We've been threatened with cited by the applicant's attorney with this citation of continuing a hearing without any, any good cause for doing so. I forget what the words were that he used. That, that they would cite that and say that the decision has been granted because of the lapse of time. So we're getting in a fight about that. I would be concerned about that.
You're right about that. Good point. Okay, I'll go with your version.
So we have
A little, little speech I made before I said, so I think we should go ahead. That's not really part of the motion. Motion was after I said, so we should go ahead. Just do it, yeah.
Presuming Donna is clear. And I have a nod that she is. We have a clear motion. We certainly have clear direction among the board. Can I have a, we had a second, we had discussion. Paul, do you have any other comments?
No.
Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul Albert?
I.
Jean McKnight?
I.
Martin Jacobs?
I.
The chair is I. Decision is unanimous. Thank you very much. And now at this point, I think how, you know, the next item on our agenda is proceeding to enter into the executive session under Massachusetts general law, chapter 30A subsection 21A1. And the question is, do we return back to, to a public open session from there?
Mr. Chair, I have one statement to make that Mr. Heap has, has suggested that I make, and I have a question of Mr. Heap at this time while we're still in open meeting.
Yes.
The first statement, and I don't have it in front of me, Chris, so please correct me if I get it wrong. But we all have to make sure that we are in a secure location while we're in executive session, that we are in a secure location where we cannot be overheard and our discussion cannot be overheard by anyone. Did I get that correct, Chris?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to, so I'm going to ask each member first and foremost, Paul, are you in a secure location?
Yes, I am.
Jean, are you in a secure location?
Yes.
And Marty, are you in a secure location?
Sure am.
And the chair is as well. So I think we've satisfied that comment, but I see a question from town council, Chris.
That, that question should be posed also to everyone else in attendance. So Lee, Alex, myself and I'm done.
And Donna. So Alex, are you in a secure location?
Yes, I am.
And Jean, are you in a, I apologize. Lee, are you in a secure location?
Yes, I am.
And Donna, I'm going to ask you to come out of mute. Are you in a secure location?
Yes, I am.
Very good.
Mr. Chair?
Before I recognize you, Jean, I will say that I'm waiting for Natasha to join. And I will ask her to affirm whether she is also when she joins us. Jean, I saw that you had your hand up a second ago.
That was all I was concerned about. Thank you.
Okay, so Paul?
Yes, my other point is that I would like to ask town council for the record in the open meeting to explain why we have the ability to go into executive session to discuss this matter. And whether he recommends that we discuss this in executive session rather than an open meeting.
Thank you. So we have, there are, just as a general rule, there are very limited reasons why any board can go into executive session to discuss matters outside of an open meeting. But one of those exceptions that does exist in the open meeting law is to discuss complaints that have been brought against a board, which is what we're talking about tonight. We're talking with respect to the open meeting law complaint that was filed against the planning board concerning its October 19th meeting. So there's the legal ability to go into executive session to discuss the complaint that's been brought against the board. And my normal advice would be when is the subject of a, of a legal complaint against it. And there is a legal, there's an opportunity to discuss the substance of the complaint, the merits of the complaint and the range of possible responses that the board might take to that complaint in, in executive session. It would certainly be reasonable, reasonable for the board to avail itself of that opportunity. I would add that it is not a legal requirement that the board go into executive session. It is merely a, a possibility under the open meeting law that the board can take advantage of if it so wishes.
And what about returning from an executive session with a summary of what occurred during the executive session and any outcomes that may stem, however, general or specific?
I will say that one thing we're going to talk about tonight is the need to produce a response to the open meeting law complaint. That must necessarily include a written response to the complaint that, that we need to provide within 14 business days ever seed of the complaint. There are a range of other options that the board might also employ, such as, you know, discussing in open session, things that were previously discussed in, in the prior meeting outside of an open session. But I don't, but those are, those are options that the board should discuss before we announce whether we're going to do that or not. But just generally speaking, we need, we do, the board does need to announce before it goes into executive session, whether it will come back into open session tonight in order to be able to do that. So leaving aside what might or might not happen, you know, you just to have the flexibility to return to open session to just potentially discuss something in that, in that open session. The board would need to make clear that it's leaving that possibility open in the vote to go into executive session.
Now, if we, our next public hearing on the substance of the application is, I think, next week. And that meeting happens to have, I think, a pretty active, busy agenda. And I don't know that we would necessarily have the time or want to spend the time at that meeting discussing at that point, any of the outcomes from our executive session tonight. I'm not even sure if we would. Because if I, am I correct, Chris, that, that the complaint itself is a separate matter, unrelated, separate from the application that we would otherwise be deliberating on?
This is outside the scope of the public hearing that
So it would be, so therefore it would be a separate agenda item if we did. So Marty, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I, I think if we're going to vote to go into executive session, we could we can discuss all, all aspects in the executive session. I do think we should, we should include in our motion that we do intend to return to an open session. But I don't believe there should be any necessary pre-announcement that we're going to speak about what happened in executive session. I don't know that we're going to do that at all. But I think we should go back into open session.
Jean, do you have any comments or questions about returning to an open session following the executive session?
I, I agree with what Marty just stated with regard to a vote to go into open session so as to keep that possibility open, but expressing the the expectation that we will not have any further business, but we the expectation that we will not have any further business, but we, you know, just in case. I think that was pretty much what you said, Marty, in different words, yeah.
And Paul, do you have any comments or questions about whether we return out of executive session into and resume a public session?
Well, it's my position that we it would be premature for us to discuss later on this evening, what is discussed during the executive session. Because I think that there will be matters, I'm, I, I am greatly expecting that there will be matters that will will follow the executive session, specifically the 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 specific language of the letter that we will be sending to Mr. Abruzzi. And so I don't think, I don't, I personally don't think that we should be discussing the executive session discussion during the open meeting tonight. I think it it is something that that we will address at a future planning board meeting as we discussed as a separate agenda item. But I don't see doing it tonight, and I don't see where where we have any other business to discuss tonight. And so I'm in favor of including in the motion that that the adjournment of the executive session will automatically be the adjournment of this open meeting. But if the three of you, or even two of the three of you disagree with me, I'm prepared to make the motion that we come back into open open meeting.
I Chris, what is? If we return to an open session, it's up to us to decide at that time what, if any, remedies we may choose, or any other solutions, or any other action we may choose to take either immediately or subsequently. Is that right?
As I understand that you have not, the board has not announced that it's gonna do any particular thing if it comes back to open session. It is merely saying that it that it may come back. So in other words, yes, it would be, if I if I understand your question properly, it would be possible to come back into open session merely to then dissolve the meeting. Or or have or engage in a discussion, or do something in the middle. I, you're not committing to doing anything in open session other than coming back with the possibility of having further discussion in open session.
I'm I'm inclined to return as Marty and Gene are to an open session. And so on that basis, on that basis, and with the advice of counsel, can I have a motion stating that the planning board shall presently enter into an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21 A1, to discuss the open meeting law complaint that Joe Abruzzi has filed with a planning board on November 2, 2021, alleging that the planning board violated the open meeting law at its October 19, 2021 meeting, and to vote on a response to same and to permit the Director of Planning and Community Development, Ms. Lee Newman, Assistant Town Planner, Alex Clee, and Recording Secretary Donna Kalanowski, and Attorney Chris Heap, to attend the executive session, and to return to open session to continue the meeting from the executive session.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Marty.
Hi.
Gene.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
The Chair Azai, we unanimously decided on the motion. At this point, we have a couple of things to to deal with technologically. I think we are required to log out of this meeting. Is that correct, Alex and Lee?
So, yeah, you will all log out. And I'm gonna leave this note so that anyone who may join will will see what's happened, and then you can, I believe, use the same link you used to get into the meeting we're in right now at the end of the executive session to return. If for any reason there's any hiccup, I'll resend the Zoom links to you, but I think that should be fine.
And so, and so to anyone that may be observing these proceedings, we do intend to resume. We don't know how long our deliberations may take, or our other discussion in the executive session will take. So the best we can say is please stay tuned. And we appreciate your patience, but we are returning to a public session. And I think with that, we just, there's no motion to adjourn this meeting, correct?
Right.
Chris? So at this point, I'm gonna sign off here and try and find the link. I'll ask Lee or Alex, if you don't see me in the next 60 seconds at the executive session link, to please resend the Zoom link for the executive session. Thank you.
Hopefully my computer will work.
Yes, but I think if you, if you, if you're having a problem with your computer, are you able to dial in Lee by phone?
Yeah, but I'm I'm doing the Zoom, so I guess maybe I can set, I can do the Zoom from my phone, but hopefully it will work. I I have no idea what's going on with this machine.
Okay.
Okay, I'll see. Hopefully, we'll all see you shortly.
Thank you, everybody.
Good luck.
Thank you. Chris, we'll see you soon.
We're just gonna wait another minute to see if others, Lee and Chris and Paul you I see is here. Is is Chris going to return?
I don't I don't know, but I don't think so.
I don't think so.
And then shall we wait for lead or reconvene?
She's having computer troubles, so I don't know.
Right.
Okay.
Alex.
Alex, you can be in touch with me if we just proceed here, can't you?
Or of course, you mean like just to tell her we're all set?
Yeah, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, no problem.
Great.
Thank you.
So.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
I do second it.
We have a motion made by Jean and a second by Marty to to adjourn this open session. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote. Paul?
Hi.
Jean?
Hi.
Marty?
Hi.
The chair is I we are we are adjourned. Thank you all.
During the public meeting, right?
You're during the public meeting, correct. Thanks, Marty. Thank you all.
Thank you. Good night.